Which then does take us to the elected official salary. We have had a number of briefings in regard to the elected official salary options. And based on the history and recommendations, there are three options that are being put forward. One.
It's identified on the.
In the briefing. So one is to put the electives and the sheriff's office, sheriff, the sheriff's salaries back to what they were relative the commissioner's salary in when they were suspended for raises for the resolution 132-08. So 132-08 suspended the raises for the electives and the sheriff's salaries. At that point in time, the electives were at 95% of the commissioner's salary and the sheriff's salary was 22% above the electives. Another option.
Which option is it? This sheet here.
It's, yeah, the, the, the options below are all options that have been discussed. And the only options that.
Okay, you said there's three options you're looking at.
Correct.
Wait on your sheets here. I don't identify anywhere.
Under November 3 briefing.
It says November 3 briefing. So the very first there identifies resolution 132-08. Do you have to see the paper?
You have three on your. He picked up his book early enough. I want to make sure he has the most.
It has November 3 briefing.
Yeah, same one.
So that would establish the salaries of the electives at a point that is when they were suspended back in '08, which is to say that the electives were at 95% of the commissioners and the sheriff was at 22% of the electives.
That budget of $20,000.
Correct.
So this raises back to what was originally the situation.
Before they were suspended.
And the 08 indicates it was 2008. Is that this past?
Uh, yes, yes.
So you don't find that as an option number one?
As one option.
As one option.
The next is a comparison of what the electives and the sheriff's salaries are relative our, the average of our comparables. So the average of the electives is 97% of the commissioners and the sheriff's salaries average is 30% of the, above the average of the electives. So the relationship that we had, which was 95 and 22, based on the averages of our comparables, that relationship is 97 and 30%.
Are you, it didn't find that as an option too?
So that one, that, that is an option. Let's call them option A, B, and C.
So going under November 3 briefing is A. Options to consider option Y is now B, don't you say?
And the third option is the comparison of the electives based on the average of our comparables at 97% of the commissioners and then 1% above the under sheriff.
Oh, 1%.
I'm sorry, $1, sorry.
Okay.
$1, that is correct. $1 above the under sheriff.
Where is that?
That's the third paragraph under November 3. And we do still have all of the.
If I was reading that, so that, that is identified as C, I said, right?
Correct.
So as it reads, it's 2016 comparison of elected officials, sheriff's and commissioner's salaries base, based, I guess you'd say, right? Or D, based on the average of comparables is the elected officials' s, a post, salary is 97% from the commissioners. You have a comma after that, don't you? It runs together otherwise, okay? And then, under that option, the sheriff's salary is $1 above the under sheriff's salary.
Uh huh. That would be option C. And then we have all of the other options that we have discussed previously.
Any questions? You can go ahead and go into discussion.
I have no question.
I'm okay with the discussion, except a question on, is C the, I thought there was an option that set the electives at 95% of the commissioners.
That's A.
We could modify these as, in any, in any manner that you would like.
Well, that would maybe be a D then. If, if the electives would be 95% of the commissioner's salary. And the, the sheriff's salary would be similar to the C, set above, about $1 above the under sheriff's salary.
Correct.
And I think that's like 59, I think it's 59% more than.
Uh, that would be a one, 51%, I believe.
Yeah, okay, 51% above the electives.
Correct, it's 51%. And we have.
And then the commissioners would continue to see the 1% in case.
Correct.
With the, with the, with the lead up resolution intact. And that would move all those that are tied to the commissioners.
Tied to their 1%.
Tied to that 1%.
Other options that we have discussed in the past, reading from the bottom up, one, option six is to utilize the option that the sheriff proposed, which is to set the sheriff's salary at 7% of the superior court judges' salary. Another option was to, option five, to use a process similar to what Island County uses via their resolution, which is to set the elected salary at some percentage of the superior court judges and the sheriff at a percentage as well. That would garner an increase of 2.6% for the electives and 2.7% for the sheriff. Another option is to establish the sheriff's salary based on an average of comparable counties for Lewis and Island, which would result in a 2% increase. Option three, from our October 17 briefing, continue the 1% for the salary of the commission, establish the electives at 95% of the commission, and establish the sheriff at 22% above the Under September 26, we had option 2B, which was to establish the average of the electives and the sheriff, resulting in a 5%, 11% increase, and tie that to the superior court judges and use the superior court judges' salary to move the elected salaries forward. Option 2A was to reduce the commissioner's salaries to their average and then tie the elected and the sheriff to that reduced commissioner's salary. And then option one is to adjust the electives and, and the, the electives and the sheriff's salaries to the average of the comparables, resulting in a 5% and 11% increase, 5% for electives and 11% increase for the sheriff, and then review them annually and make adjustments annually. So there's a number of options there.
I would, I would eliminate the option to tie any of our salaries to the, any elected salaries to the superior court judge's salaries. But that's set by the commission on salaries, it's set by the initiative, and it really focuses on King County since a third of the judges support King County.
So that, the only way of option 2B is that, correct?
Yes. 2B.
It would eliminate option, probably option five.
I thought we had already eliminated all these.
I know. We keep adding options.
Well, we sent direction back, you can have the stuff that we didn't direct you to do, so it's kind of hard, so we have three new ones now.
The guy on the cable is A, B, C, and D. And D really, really, C and D, the only difference between C and D is the electives at either 95% of the commissioner's salary or 95 or 97% of the commissioner's salary. That's what I see. You see it differently than that in the choices?
Well, yeah, but again, my issue was that is what we were directed to go back to and come back with these different options. I was in favor before of cutting the commission salary and then setting it to 95.
Which option?
That was before, but we won't pass that, we're not there on that anymore. What we asked to go back to was to look at repealing 132-08 and bringing it back to where it was, has been historically.
Press working.
Yes, where it has been historically, and that's where I, I still am in favor of.
What is that, I can't, can't follow you, Commissioner.
A.
Option A.
Which, which basically is to, to rescind 132.08.
The resolution resets the 1%.
No, before that. The resolution that, that took the elected officials off the 95% plan. They've been on 95% plan for 20 years or so. This, by repealing that, it restores them back to where they were.
All right, I understand what you're saying.
And we don't, you know, I, I, there's a lot of spreadsheet here, a lot of columns, but we don't know what the salary levels, what, what option A.
Actually, it, it does, because we went over them.
So the salary levels under option A, if you turn to the last page. About the middle of the page where it says comparison based on Mason County ratios, ratio of electives commissioner 95%.
A 6% increase for both, for both electives and sheriff.
Uh huh. And the 1%, based on a 1% increase for commissioners.
So for elected officials, $4,397 from here increase, and for the sheriff, $3,0361 for the other.
And then the next would be option B. 97% increase for the, tying the, the electives at 97% of the commission and the sheriff at 130%. That will result in an 8% increase for the electives and a 15% increase for the sheriff. And then option C is the last one. That would tie it at 97% and give the sheriff 151% of the electives. That would be again, an 8% increase for the electives and a 23% increase for the sheriff.
Okay, and then, and D would be that same option, put the electives at 95%.
Correct.
And the sheriff at the 151% of the electives.
Correct.
And that would put, put the sheriff at $1 above the under sheriff.
Which is how much a month? 10 minus.
I think it's important to, to say that what we're talking about is, is the position, I'm not talking about the election. This is the position of, of these electives.
That's correct.
So I'm not trying to attach a name to anybody or.
No.
Or an evaluation of their performance, anything like that. That's, that's not the issue here.
Well, we can't, because whoever gets elected is 18 years old and lives in the county. There's no other.
This is, this is the position. And I guess I'd advocate that I think the position of, of sheriff is far different than any other elected position in, in the county.
With that last one, that would, our sheriff is the second highest paid sheriff of all The only one, the only other one is Grace Harbor, which is definitely an outlier, and they had their issues and they, they were pulled off, but it would pay more than Clallum, Callett's, a lot more than Clallum, Callett's, Island, Jefferson, Scagit, Lewis. If we were to go with, repeal what we had and go back to where we were, that would put the sheriff right in the middle of all of them.
So that's option A.
Option A would put the sheriff right in the middle of all the comparables.
Which is, in my opinion, the best we can add to getting our tax base. If we can at least pick the middle of our comparables, it, it is being responsive here. This is, this is what tax base can support.
Well, I would argue that if you look at those, those counties, if you look at those seven counties on that, on that page, only Jefferson has, has one incorporated city. All the others have, Lewis, for example, has nine incorporated cities. Grace Harbor had nine incorporated cities. They had nine chiefs and one county sheriff. And with a county of our size, we're now over 60,000 people. Given the geography, given the, the only incorporated city is only 10,000 people, it's a huge area to cover, just to run the jail, provide safety for all those, all those citizens, but as well as manage the risk of, of all that, especially the jail and the other functions of it. I would advocate that I think being in the top quartile of those comparables is, is appropriate. And I think those elected officials, sheriff's elected officials, those counties will be soon adjusting their, their positions as well. So I wouldn't have trouble being in the top quartile.
One of the things that I'm hearing at the risk, at the risk of adding after, is that I had thought we were walking away from this, an adjustment to meet the middle of our, the average of our comparables and then moving forward with it to 95% and 22%.
That would mean.
That's what I had, had totally prepared to go forward with. And, and then that being said.
Which is option, currently called option A, the first one.
That is option A.
To repeal, yeah, to repeal the resolution that suspended it and put it back to where it was.
But, but also make an adjustment to the comparables. Knowing full well the comparables will change and we cannot constantly be chasing after what the other counties are doing.
Oh, as opposed to tying it to the commission?
That would bring us back to the first one that I had brought forward, which was a reduction in the commission salary in order to, to do that, because their comparable, the comparable is different.
Okay.
Because right now, if we adjust the electives to the commission, their, the commission is slightly higher than the average. So they would be slightly higher than the average of the other electives based on that. But then if the other electives move forward at a rate higher than 1%, which is what the commission is at currently, then both the commission and the electives fall behind the average of the other counties as they move forward. Because if they start moving at 2%, which is where they've been recently.
Two to four.
Two to four. Then the, tying it to the commissioners holds them back, back from moving forward with the average of our comparables. But that doesn't say that we can't set in, we can't establish setting them at a rate and then reviewing them annually. But they're slightly ahead now, so that, that may not change for one year. It may take two years or more before we can start adjusting them again to tie to the average of the electives.
Boy, that is complicated.
It does.
I don't, I don't want to make it complicated and I don't want to be below average. I don't think we want to be below average in our position. I think we want to be in the upper quartile. If you take what the range is and you try to do it for quartiles, I want to be in the top quartile.
I want to be in our tax base.
You want to be average.
I want to be, our tax base, our tax base is well below so many of these, are comparables. So to go higher than, or to go in, saying that we have the tax base to support the upper quartile is, is not correct.
Well, so you're picking your opinion, but it's, it's, it's a relative issue. I mean, it's, when you're, it's relative to what, what you, you get what you pay for. You get what you pay for. People run for these offices, much of it has to do with the salary. If they want to leave the private sector, for example, or they want to keep their, their family on hold and run for an office and, and all the consequences that has win or lose. So I'd rather be in the top quartile. Frank, let me ask you a question. When the, back when we passed this resolution, 132-08, Sheriff Whitebar was there then, right? But wasn't there, wasn't there a difference in the salary? I think he was, at that time, wasn't the position paid before that time, wasn't it paid at something like 26% of the, of the commission's salary? And then for some reason, it all went to 22?
No, we audited that, it was 22.
It was, it had always been 22%.
It had.
Yeah, there was an error in the formulation in the spreadsheet, which represented it as 26%, but it was, and it always had been 22%.
But it was never paid at, at that, at the 20s? Was it ever paid at 26%?
No.
Okay.
Commissioner, I'm, I'm with you on the, we are not one of the bigger counties, so just not. And we don't have the tax base, we don't have the money to be one of the bigger counties. And for all the jobs that we have, they still have to do with some of the same people. It doesn't matter how many other variables affect it. Island County is so much like us, it's ridiculous, but they're at 84,000 people, but if you exclude all that, it brings us down to the same population or pretty close to it, unincorporated. But aside from any of that, this has been our historic norm, I agree with our historic norm. I do think though that we could run into a problem in another couple of years to do this all over again, doing option A, which I agree with, with the 1%. I would be more along the lines of, because in the next year, looking at the budgets in the next year, if the commissioners days were out, everybody will start to be at a, at a norm. I would agree with even doing the cut and getting it situated and then allowing for 3% from that time forward.
3%?
So 3% might have been historical, but the first year is going to be a cut, $1,300 basically from the common commission salary.
Total.
That's, that's total. The commission would make about $1,300 less than they.
Based on the increase that would have been afforded for '17.
That's right. So this way.
Off of today's dollars, it would be about $230, off of the projected 2017 1% increase that would not occur, that, that would be $1,300.
Because it's his number, I'm using not mine. So that, that first year brings down, but at least it sets everybody up for the future where it continuously goes up and they don't have to worry about negotiating that and fighting that every year.
What that position is, is to take the commissioner's salary, which is about 2% or 3% above the average of comparables, bring it down to the.
Average of the comparables.
Average of the comparables, and then tie the electives and the sheriff to that new number.
Add still the, the 95%, 22%?
Yes, but then you're going to want to adjust the 3% back to where it was normally, because this will allow them to continually get a, an increase. If you do the 95% on the 1%, and each year they'll have 1% increase, they'll fall back behind within two years.
Of the comparables.
Yeah.
And just keep in mind, you may have missed your opportunity to change commissioner's salaries, because tomorrow's the election. Raising those salaries prior to then, I'm looking at an MRSC. And it also says same is true, applies to decrease.
So you can't do it prior to the election.
You have to do it prior.
You have to do it prior. You can't do it tomorrow then.
Correct.
Because elections.
So, so we have actually the opportunity to do.
You can do it tomorrow.
Yeah, as I say, you can still do it tomorrow, because the polls don't poll it out yet.
You'd have to.
Just kind of.
But I'm just.
It's way down with it.
And I'm okay with not doing anything, I'm just telling you that we're going to run into the same problem in another year or two. Like I said, I'm talking about reducing my salary if I'm the one that will go back on. And if not, I'm good with that, I still agree with it, I think that's where it should be.
And so you could modify A to say, link it to 95% of the commission and 22% of the electives, and then do an annual salary survey and review it.
I don't want to do that each year, because then you're back into the same situation we're in right now every single year. And we might as well just keep up what we're doing and then make our adjustments.
Make our adjustments.
Yeah, we'll, we'll either put a salary question together or.
No, no.
I'm saying either do that, or you're going to have to do a comparable and you'll be adjusting it with.
Annual.
Yes.
In which case you can't really tie it to the elected, to the commissioner's salary, because you can't change the commissioner's salary.
Correct.
Let's go back to some of this incorporated, unincorporated, when you look at counties, like look at Scagit County, all right? 116,000 people, this is 2016, 117,000 people, it has eight incorporated cities.
And the auditor bills with every single one of them, Commissioner?
Seadrill, Woolley is bigger than Shelton, Mount Vernon is three times the size of Shelton, and Corrus is, is one and a half times the size of Shelton. So you've got, you know, about, about the same unincorporated area, unincorporated people in Scagit, but when you go to Island, you know, you mentioned Island, Commissioner Headland, there's 53,000 in the unincorporated area, there's more, 52,000 in the unincorporated area of Mason County.
That's what I just said.
I mean, there's, there's.
You've got, you've got people to call. In practical terms, what you do as a sheriff is those cities help. You have those cities within your county. We don't have that luxury. But we, what our, our sheriff's position is, is a huge landmass of, what, we've got 624 square miles, something like that. The city of Shelton, let's give them five, 10, 10 square miles, whatever, they're not even.
And then take away.
And then take away for the Washington State Patrol and this, but at the same time, I thought we were doing individuals, we're doing...
We're not doing, I'm not talking about individuals, I'm talking about positions. The position of sheriff of Mason County, I think is, is, I, very unique in this state. Only seven, I think it's six counties only have one incorporated city. And we're one of those. I think it's a unique, unique situation and I think it should be, it should be considered in that, in that way. So just comparing, the comparisons you're making, I think are, are not quite relevant to the position in this county. And it's important.
Okay, so we are sitting right now with inability to adjust commissioner's salaries. And so whatever is decided on, it either is or is not tied to the 1%. So that does change the discussion into a place where we can, first of all, we've got to look at all these.
Which ones would you...
But, but the other side is, I just wanted to also share, there is approximately $1 million worth of increased costs that we know are mandatory in the 2017 budget, of which we don't have an abundant financial balance to cover. So any, I, I do agree that a $35,000 or $20,000 budget impact is relatively inconsequential, given the size of our budget, but I don't want to continue to make individual decisions without looking at the entire impact of our ability to afford it. We've consistently done this, you know, one request here, two requests there, and then the cumulative effects are lost on this until we sit down and see that we have signed contracts with our cliff bar units, sought increases by the Department of Retirement Systems, of course, the medical, have increased through our CBAs, all of the things outside of our control or within our control on the, on the contracts, brought us to a place where we have a million extra expenses and expenses for 2017. So I want to look at this within the context of, of all the other mandatory increases. And I want to get the complication out of it, as far as all the options for me personally. And I, I'm, in my mind, I'm looking at a potential $35,000 increase all around for 2017. But as far as how this clashes out, I'm not willing to make any kind of commitment without looking at the context of all the other financial issues.
Again, I'm, I'm willing to repeal 13208, bring it back to the historic pay structure for all of them so they get reinstated back into where they're supposed to be, which would be a 6% increase on the electeds, which is a $20,000 impact overall.
Okay, I would not vote for that if we were in a commission meeting. But I, I believe that, and I, I'm going to give you this as a perspective to somebody that's got less than two months to go after 12 years. You get what you pay for. I think we need to, I expressed it before here today, I'll, I'll make it to the point, but I think we should be in the top quartile with our elected officials in our comparables so that we attract the best possible people to do these jobs. Your job, Commissioner, and your job, Commissioner, and mine, is to oversee $100 million every year. That's the budget. You take everything at $100 million. So I think it's important that we have the best qualified people to run for these jobs. And we don't see that, I think. I think what, when we look at, I'm looking at some of the, the successor, treasurer, clerk, primarily those jobs are filled by somebody that's already been in the office. I, and that's just my observation over the years. I like to see it opened up where more people in the private sector are interested in running. And, and all walks of life are interested in running.
Commissioner, we've been through budgets, well, kind of, budgets together, and you voted against a pay increase for them each time since I've been here, so I'm, I don't understand the difference.
I have trouble understanding your, what you say as well, but I'm just stating my position as clearly as I can. And I think, you know, Commissioner Jeffries, you, you mentioned about the budget this year, and you're talking about the budget as well. I did sign the, I did not sign the budget instructions because I think what we're doing is micromanaging. We're looking at each thing so, and much under the microscope. If we had said at the beginning to the electeds, to all the department heads, you have the ability to raise your budget 1%, or you have your ability to raise it a half percent, it would have made this, this process a lot easier, but that's water under the bridge.
Now, Commissioner, if you showed up for any of the meetings, you find out, we wish we could say that, but that don't exist. So again, you know, it's easy to sit down in the chair and say, I would have done that because you don't show up to help us to do any of it.
I prefer not going to listen to this discussion here on this. Oh, so what we need to do to move forward, I suppose, is to quantify each of the A, B, C, D. I, I want to throw up here.
Remove the rest of them?
Remove the rest of them.
I, I agree, that's a good idea. I think you need to simplify this.
And then put it within the context of what we're going to find $1 million.
I don't know how we can test into it, though, at least not...
Well, and we're talking about $15,000 worth of difference. I, I don't know what D looks like, as far as total cost, but...
It, it would be a little bit less than what it is here.
Than what it is here.
Because C, excuse me, I shouldn't be more specific, if you go down A, B, C, and then I added D, C would, D would be at, at 9, the electeds would be at 95% of the commission salary. So I assume that would reduce it a little bit below the $43,000.
So I, I guess my question is, if we were to do a $1 above the sheriff's salary...
Under sheriff's salary.
Under sheriff's salary. So then, so then it puts the sheriff on an automatic increase when the under sheriff is tied on, on the CBAs. So it does, it does pretty much do the one thing we had asked not to, and that was to tie the sheriff's salary to the...
But the commission voted for that.
But your consistency, question that comes into, your consistency, your, your, your hope to be consistent.
It's hard to be consistent.
Would you tie it to the under sheriff or just tie it to that percentage and therefore that same percentage above the electeds so that they make...
So have the initial adjustment, if you want to allocate the under sheriff?
And then tie it to 151%?
I don't think you can tie the sheriff to the CBAs.
No.
He's negotiating with it.
Well, that's why the...
So it's tied to the...
That would be the 51% above the electeds.
Then tie it therefore, 51%.
It doesn't mean that it would always stay $1 above the under sheriff.
Back of the envelope calculation here...
So there you go, I'm just consistent.
Takes D...
Good job.
I rationalize it a little.
Good job.
Takes D, option D, at 95% and 1% above, on $1 above, that would be around $31,000 to $32,000 increase.
That's less than B.
No, he meant for, for, for the one position.
Yeah. Oh, okay, for 1% for the position.
So it's 30% increase in the sheriff's salary.
Which the commission did years ago for the prosecutor, that probably was a larger increase.
It was a large, I don't, no, relative to this recommendation, I don't recall what it is, whether it's two or less.
There's a little way over here.
So I can redo accurately the option D calculation and then bring it back forward and incorporate the 2017 budgetary constraints as well.
Well, and, and I have the decision, I mean, I, I, this is what I prefer. Whatever happens here would be a resolution. And that resolution would be necessarily included in the budget. And it'd be a budgeted, you know, for 2017 with a resolution and, you know, necessary to sign at the same time, or two passes at the same time. That's what I would prefer.
As long as it gets said.
So you're, you're not tying anything, any other, what else are you tying to that implementation of the budget? I mean, that's, you're kind of separating this out in a unique situation where you look at your budget as a whole, you're just kicking, you're kicking the...
I thought what you said, it's going to be passed on December 8th.
Yeah, I thought what you said, that whatever decision is made, did I miss something? That whatever decision is made is included off into the budget automatically. I thought that's what you just said. Whatever resolution passes is to be automatically...
Well, I'm not willing to consider a resolution without it being, it is going to be part of the 20, what we finally put out in the public to, to review and have a public hearing on for our 74 budget. There are, no, there are a couple other, there's a lot of decisions that need to be made. There are a lot of preliminary budget requests that are, that are being made, there are new positions being requested, which would again need to be approved, and so this would be in consideration.
So you're talking in that, the preliminary budget that we need to have to expedite through?
Right.
You want these numbers reflected, whatever the decision is?
And our budgeting options.
So that will be this week, those decisions I can make next week?
That's what I understood, so it'll have, it has to be in the budget. We don't want it in the next year's budget, it's what it is down to.
But don't you need a resolution to establish these, it's ongoing, or do you want to just look at it, if every commission will look at it and do this all over?
Well, we'll, we'll choose among the four options, or you might, I would like to choose among the four options within the context, at the very least, of the 2017 budget that we've had for 2017.
Okay, well, you're, you're kind of turning that on our head here, our briefing session. Usually at a briefing session, you pick an option to go forward to vote on. So you're not picking an option to go forward on.
I'm not, because we found last week that we still need to identify among those, maybe the cuts or additional revenues. And to, and to consider another addition to the additional revenues, we want to discuss it all in context, because we do have a context of all the decisions that need to be made because a budget, to pass a budget is balancing competing priorities, all of which are very important, all of which are essential, especially when people ask me for the budget increases.
But I think you got prioritized.
And that's what I want to do in these budget sessions, sir. That's what our budget sessions are for. And we have not looked at all, all the requests up against, you know, the dollar. We ended up last week identifying even under the mandatory increases of our CBAs, the payroll, increased payroll costs of existing staff, we need to find another $1 million.
So we briefed on this September 12th, or 19th, or the 26th, and October 17th, and now November 7th. So we, we briefed on this five times.
Options every time.
And we don't have this...
Because the options keep coming forward. We haven't zero, we haven't narrowed it down in a way.
But can we narrow it down between these, these three options?
The four that you just, you added a new option, though, I don't even know what the dollar impact is, sir.
It's less than $43,000. What would it offhand it be, $1,000 less, $2,000 less, $1,000? Instead of the elected official salary at 97% of the commission salary, it would be 95%. Or if it, so it would be less than $43,000.
Or we could just repeal 13208 and go back to the 95%.
Because what I don't want to do is make a decision that has an increased budget impact without seeing within the context of the rest of the budget. Or we are making a commitment right now to increase the budget for 2017 beyond preliminary budget requests of, take a number, $43 to $20,000, which means now we're, just as we do with our union, we have to tie our hands and I have to find another...
I'm just stating my position.
And so I need to know what goes out the door. Is it the request for another clerk? Is it a request for, you know, rate, a, a, there are so many requests, we have to look at this one in the context now.
Can I ask you a question, Frank? We already had given budget direction to all the electeds to increase, to include into their budget that, a certain increase. What would that increase and what would be the difference between that?
This is, this includes what is already in the budget. So in the budget is 2.88%.
So it's 2,000 above the 2.88, okay, that's fair.
That, it's, that's already deducted from the impacted. So this is, this is the impact above what's already in the budget.
So we made that decision last meeting at 2.88%. So isn't that tying your hands about there, right there?
Well, that decision was made a long time ago.
That was a decision that was made in June. That was made in June and we, and we saw preliminary budgets basing on that.
That's on your budget instructions, Frank, which I didn't saw, because I went through that. I think you need to...
Actually, one of the reasons you gave at the time was because of the non-represented elected official salary increase and why you didn't sign it. That's what you told us.
If I mean, option D is roughly the same as option B, $35,000 increase.
What's that again, Tom?
Option D is about the same as option B, a $35,000 increase. We're increasing, we're increasing the sheriff's salary, reducing the elected salary.
It reduces the elected salary?
Sure, it's going down to 95% not 97%.
Oh, I see. Then the proposal.
Correct.
Since there's several...
There's several, several electeds.
Several electeds, that would drop it down to about...
35.
About 35,000.
Maybe a little higher.
So can we simplify it by just having one, as C or D? D is, so we have three proposals, not four.
So we can eliminate D if you want to do it at 95, not 97%. Sorry, we can eliminate C.
That's what I mean.
And I think we can eliminate B, because I don't hear anybody else advocating for B.
Well, that was, that was my original, I mean, that was my, what I always wanted to do, was to do the average of the comparables and then make whatever percentage that is to the commissioner's salary, make that the, our resolution going forward. That's what, B was always, has always been what I wanted, but listen to everybody.
So the only one we can drop is C.
Out there. So you've got A, B, and D. And it seems like, Mr. Jeffries, you're advocating for B. Commissioner, another one you're advocating for A, and I'm advocating for D.
And if you'd like to see any of this in prelim, tomorrow is our workshop.
This afternoon, too?
This afternoon, yeah, we have a little bit of time. But I figured Frank won't have, maybe he saw it and never saw it tomorrow.
No, I won't, not until tomorrow.
So are you saying B was the 97%?
Who, 90?
Well, what I wanted to, the B was, I wanted to adjust it to the average and then set it at, and whatever that is, and then going forward to 95, keeping the 1% definition, understanding that we'd always fall behind, but at least we made that initial adjustment.
To the average of the comparables.
To the average of the comparables, and then, and then go forward at 95. And so I don't even know what 97 is.
So you're, you're...
Well, the average of the comparables relative to comparables commission is 97%.
Again, that's not what we said.
I wanted to make an initial adjustment and then go forward at 95.
So the initial adjustment needs to be 97, and then...
What she said, said before, and that's the same thing, that's the difference she said in 95. What the 95 is, where are they at on their number? They're at 10, set the commission salary at $55,000. With the ninety-five is, where are they at on their number? If they're at ten, set the commission salary at five percent, so that they're ninety-five percent of the, of that salary.
Well, that's, I'm understanding she wants to leave the difference where it is.
Now.
Look, one, you're saying that's one of the years of your year.
Yeah.
So it's kind of a hybrid of A and B. It just keeps coming at me in a different way. What I wanna do is, is make an adjustment on all the elected official salaries, except for the commissioners.
Make an adjustment to the elected official salaries too.
To the average of our comparables.
That'll be ninety-seven.
And then.
And then.
No.
And then, and then you have a flat number adjustment.
Yeah.
Then create a ninety-seven.
So the commission is at, at the ninety-five percent rate bar for that is. So otherwise, if they're moved to here, whatever ninety-five percent is, the commission is at a hundred percent.
And then that would be dropping us to two point three dollars.
Which we can't do.
Which we can't do. So I mean, we have to adjust it to ninety-seven.
We're past that time. That's where you do it tomorrow.
Correct.
So we have the ninety-seven. Sorry about that.
It's okay. It is very complicated.
And then the sheriff's salary at thirty percent above the official's, we're gonna cut that down to thirty percent.
That would put him at the average of his comparables.
Got it. The thirty-five thousand dollar budget.
Thirty percent increase.
So, Mr. Jeffries, I think you and I agree on, if yours is D. I agree with that, except, except the sheriff's position. Because I don't think we should, I think we should continue the one percent increase of commissioner's salary, that starts to keep something going in our direction.
It does give, if this is correct, it gives the sheriff a fifteen, the sheriff's office a fifty percent increase in salary to a hundred and two. Is that right? Hundred and two thousand, one hundred and fifty-one, which is a very good salary. Now, it's a relative decision. It's a relative.
Well, then, you really have agreement on, on A, on first part of, of B. If you have two.
Really?
We don't have need for ninety-seven percent. I, I agree with the, put them back to where they should be. That's an increase of six percent. That's a lot of money, and that's a lot of an increase. That's a nice and reasonable increase for any elected official. Plus the seven percent we've already taken the last couple of years. We've been working in that direction and doing very well. And this, no matter what, even at ninety-five, that's a jump of, of, what was it, six percent, right? Six percent, yes. That's a jump of six percent, and the wages in one year above the seven, so you're not up here.
So if, I guess my question is, how does that, that set the salaries in your comparables? It's option A, it means you've got a increase on average for shares. So that the seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars would be the.
At ninety-five percent.
And compares to the average of the blacks.
What is that, comparison? Sixty-three, seventy-four, over the.
So that is a.
I'd like to first say sixty-three, seventy-four, so. One, two, one.
Well, the average is sixty-three, seventy-four.
Yeah, that, that would put us again in the middle of the counties. They're, they're monthly sixty-four, fifty-six, forty-six. So the average is sixty-three, seventy-four, thirty-nine. So it's the three percent that the commissioners are higher than the average of the electeds. And their, and the average of their, commission is three percent above the average of commissioners in comparables. So if you hook the electeds to the higher average, their salary is gonna be slightly higher than the average of our comparables. So at option A, the average is sixty-four, fifty-six, forty-six of, I'm sorry, the monthly for the new salary for the electeds is sixty-four, fifty-six, forty-six. The average of our comparables is sixty-three, seventy-four, thirty-nine, slightly higher.
Yeah, sixty-four, then what, what are you looking at? Is that ninety-seven or the ninety-five?
Ninety-five.
Okay, sixty-four.
Fifty-six, forty-six.
Fifty-six. So that would, that wouldn't change it, then, then the only two counties that, there'd be two counties that are paid more than us out of the setting.
So option.
We could change option B to read ninety-five percent.
I thought you did.
That was your, your, option D. The four.
Option A, that makes sense this year.
We'll repeal 13208, put them back at exactly the ninety-five percent compared on board.
Which still brings me to those, or at least.
Okay, sorry.
Very comfortably within the.
Only two people are paid more.
Very comfortably.
Okay, so you, you, you two, tell them what you have here, what you'd be agreed to.
To review within, for me, review within the entire 2017 budget requests to suspend resolution 132-08, set the sheriff's salary at twenty-two percent of the elected officials, no, set, set, set the elected official's salary at ninety-five percent of the current commissioner's salary. The sheriff's salary at twenty-two percent of the, above the elected official's salary. To continue one percent increases each year.
Well, you say that's already in resolution, nothing changed.
But that's the thesis, isn't it?
Now, you're proposing to put that on, in a resolution order, in, put that in the budget?
I'm proposing to put that into consideration of budget increases for 2017.
And we'd have to do a resolution.
We do have to do a resolution.
Just.
You say you have to do a resolution. Okay, I know, that's what you two agree.
Put on the.
Okay. I can count, two to one.
Okay.